Thankfully, live feed is working.
So I did hear from Ryan, who expected to be here, but I have not heard from our newest member, Mike. I sent him a couple of emails. I don't know if he'll.
How many items are on the agenda?
How many items are on the agenda? It is 11, including call to order and adjournment.
Okay, because I don't have it in front of me, so.
Okay. Hi, Mike. How are you?
I'm doing good. Hello, everyone.
Okay. So I think we have a quorum. We are all here. I think we can, I think we can start if you folks want to start.
Okay. I completely forgot how to do this on a call to order.
Perfect.
Our meeting, roll call.
Uh, Wells. He's here. Fields is here. Devens is here. Nichols is here. And we still have an open seat.
All right.
That is yet to be appointed.
Okay, and next item on the agenda.
It's approval of the agenda.
All right. Anyone?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from the previous meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it is approved. Next item.
Uh, we have, since it is, it is now July, we have election of chair and vice chair with terms through June 30th, 2021.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Fields as a chair again.
Second.
We are also looking for a vice chair.
What are the responsibilities with vice chair?
Uh, that would be if our chair is not available, uh, our vice chair would step in and run the meeting.
Brian, are you open to that?
I would be if no one else will volunteer.
I nominate Brian. For vice chair.
There we go. Mute. Hello. Yeah, second.
Excellent.
Um, do I do all those in favor? Keisha, myself being a chair and Ryan being vice chair, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those pose? All right, I didn't get any nays. So, all right. Right, myself and Ryan, we are chair and vice chair. Next item on the agenda.
We've got public comment, but no, no public comment was received. Uh, then we have, then we have staff report. So I sent out, uh, you folks have gotten our staff report for the last few months, but, uh, just a couple of things to highlight in the current, uh, from the last month. Obviously, we're still, uh, as we've been, have been since March, dealing with, with COVID-19, trying to really, um, balance public health messaging there, right? Reminding folks to, to wash their hands and, and wear face coverings and keep distance and, and limit, limit their, their, uh, interactions, really two essential ones. Um, and, you know, really, uh, that takes a lot of focus and a lot of time to, to, those, those tend to be active, uh, comment threads. If you want to, if you want some engaging, uh, social media content, discuss face coverings. Um, we've also done a lot of talking the last month about firearms, which is another really great kind of post to, if you want to drive, uh, engagement as a municipality. Um, we've also been talking internally primarily right now, uh, about, about social justice and racial equity. Obviously, this is a, a critical issue. Um, it's, it's a national conversation, but, but recognizing, um, that there is work, uh, a lot of work to be done locally. Um, and, and sort of figuring out what those, those next steps are. I mean, the conversation really started, um, with some questions about our policing practices and, and, and those things, which is, which is what was driving the conversation. Uh, following the, the murder of George Floyd, but, um, I think it's important for us as a, as a organization, as a, as a city, to really talk about, uh, about the, the, the larger structural inequity issues that, that we know exist. Um, so there's, there's pieces, of course, of the communications department, um, is, can, can directly, uh, work on. And I think we've got, and, and I mentioned a project that Jillian's and I have been sort of talking about, it, um, that's based on Denver's I Am Denver project, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but I think there's some other things that, that, um, we're having conversations with both to make sure that, that we have transparency at the, um, with the policing, um, as well as what are other things that we can do? In, within the organization. And some of that'll have to be driven at the council level, some of that'll have to be driven by the administration level. But we'll continue to, to have those conversations and continue to push to, to actually, to act. Um, Blues and Barbecue is, is, uh, going to be a little bit different this year. Jillian's been doing a lot of work to build out this socially-distanced, uh, event, um, that's coming up this Saturday. Um, Derek put together a playlist of 12 hours of blues music. Uh, Jillian and I did interviews with committee members to sort of talk, give folks a little bit of behind the scenes. Um, and we worked with the Inglot to record a bunch of interviews with, uh, the artists who would have been performing on, on the stage this year. Um, we've also worked with some local restaurants, so you can get some family, uh, style, uh, meals to go. Um, Eric Sittig, one of our committee members, put together a curated six-pack of Iowa craft beer that, that you can pick up with those meals. Um, Jillian organized and, uh, a bunch of craft kits that, that folks will start picking up this week. Um, Jillian, how many do we end up, uh, uh, having signed up? Uh, we did two rounds of it because they went so quickly.
Yeah, we initially released 100 and they were taken within the day, so, uh, we released another 100 and those were taken in a matter of hours as well, so, um, definitely well-received and hopefully they'll all be picked up this week. We also reserved a quantity for the pantry families as well. Um, an additional partnership that we have, um, in addition to what Nick has already listed, is the pantry is also having a virtual turkey trot throughout the month. And we are providing both lunch and dinner option meals, um, for pantry families, craft kits, and some other free, um, Blues and Barbecue giveaways as well, so. Um, we'll also be broadcasting the station in their parking lot for, for those that stop by to, um, that are, um, taking advantage of that at the pantry.
Um, we also, earlier this month, or sorry, last month, did our first-ever virtual product open house. It was really to talk about our project that was, that's slated for a couple of years down the road, but it's, uh, a realignment of Dubuque, um, and Front Street, right there around the bike shop. Um, so that was a good format since our, our annual event, which was originally scheduled for the end of March, didn't happen. It worked really well and, and it's something that we'd like to do, uh, again. Um, I think those are the highlights. I'd be happy to answer any questions or, or comments that you folks have.
Are we gonna, and talk, so are we talking about the I Am Denver project later in the conversation?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'll. Has the North Liberty Police, uh, reached out to communications in any way to, I don't know, kind of initiate a positive aspect of North Liberty City, uh, police and, I don't know how they can do better, and I don't want to say better, but how, ways that they're communicating with residents. Um, have they reached out to communications at all?
So they do a lot of, of community events, and obviously that's been a little bit stymied, um, through, through the pandemic. Um, so we haven't, we've, we certainly talked about ways to make sure that, um, so working with, working with, with Diane on sort of helping talk about, about the current policies and where they're at, um, as well as making sure that we got a bunch of those, the most requested ones are, are online now. Um, but we haven't talked about town halls or anything like that. Um, I think, I think that's something that, um, we'll continue to push forward and, and talk about. Um, and I, I know that they're open to it. I think, I think some of, some of it too is, is that everybody's just, the pandemic was, was a, was a larger issue that, uh, that was taking a lot of time and, and sort of disrupted, obviously, um, a lot of, a lot of the work that they were doing as first responders. Um, and as well as the rest of the city. So, so we haven't had a chance to really get down and say, what, what does, what does, uh, community engagement look like in the midst of a pandemic and in, in this discussion of, of, of social justice and racial equity?
Okay. That's all I had. Anything else? Any other comments? All right, then moving on to the next agenda item.
Which is public access provider policy update. Um, there was a memo in your, uh, packet. So, in short, we we provide public access, which means folks can provide us, um, video to play on the channel. Um, and there's, there's certain, some content restrictions on that. It can't be gambling, it can't be pornography, things like that. Um, but generally speaking, as long as it's provided by the public, um, and meet some other basic guidelines, formatting, for example, we, we play it. Obviously, peg channels were different when they were first conceived because things like YouTube and Facebook didn't exist. Um, and what we see now is that we, we still have a small stable of local providers, but we get a fairly steady interest from, from other groups that are not, not in Johnson County, not in Iowa. Um, and, you know, each one of those requests takes, takes staff time to sort of work through, uh, getting their programming and, and making sure that they've, they've completed a form. Um, that's pretty straightforward. Um, but then we also spend time cataloging it and, and programming it and transcoding it. So one of the things that, that, it, and all of that, that staff time detracts from, I don't want to say detracts, it, it, it consumes resources. And sometimes it's not clear that the programming is of value to the community that, that, that the channel serves, North Liberty. And so what we're proposing is this one very simple addition to those requirements, and that is just to require that any, um, any program, each program identify a local sponsor, and, and we would define a local sponsor as someone with a residence in Johnson County. Um, and that they provide us that contact information. We think that this is a simple thing for us to, uh, it will be invisible to our current, um, providers. Most of them live in Johnson County or have a person locally that we interact with. Um, and will, will help sort of relieve some of those, um, the use of those resources for things that aren't, um, that, that are just using the channel to, to distribute to North Liberty. Um, right? They have lots of other options to, to get those videos out, YouTube and, and Facebook and all of those other tools. Um, and if they are, truly do have a connection to our community, um, finding, uh, somebody within the county to, that, that can essentially be our local point of contact shouldn't be, uh, a struggle. So it seems like a fairly easy way to sort of solve, solve that problem without it being too cumbersome, uh, for, for program providers or for, for staff. You're still muted, I believe.
I'm not. Can you hear me?
Okay.
I can. Um, so it would just be tied to a resident or a business that's in Johnson County on the phone.
Yep.
They can possibly make up a name.
We would. They sure could. And, and I think, you know, we're asking for that contact information, so whether that's a phone number or an email address, and could simply, would simply reach out to those people and, and make sure that, that they were in fact, and, and that fact, and, and that checking wouldn't take, uh, wouldn't take too much effort.
Okay.
What is the grievance policy? I couldn't find it.
Yep, so I, I did send you that, the full, um, the full policy document, Tom. Uh, the, let's see. The formal grievance policy, um, any person may present a formal written grievance to the communications department by, in person or by mail. Copies will be forwarded to, uh, to you folks. Um, the chair, the vice chair, and city administrator, all formal written grievances require the following information in order to be processed. Uh, name, address, uh, I, I can send this, this is on our website under the NLTV guidelines, but I will also say I have in my soon-to-be 15 years, is that right? 13 years, have never, uh, had a formal grievance filed with the city. I don't know that it happened before that either.
I, I think you have a chance of doing this, um, if, uh, somebody wants to show something and you say no. That's why I asked what it is.
Sure, and that's, and it, I think, I think that, that we sure could, and that's, and I think that that would probably come up in this instance if somebody submitted a, uh, program, um, and made up a name. Or there was some question as to whether or not the person who they named was in fact a Johnson County resident or something like that. But, but I also think that our goal is always to, to have a conversation with folks before, um, we just wouldn't do it, or and, and, and tend to work these things out informally, if there is a, if there is an issue.
So your assumption is that, um, as long as the person lives in Johnson County, whatever they submit is okay?
No, 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 no. So, so it has to meet the, the, the FCC guidelines, right? Of no gambling, no commercialization, no solicitation, no advertising, no products and services, uh, no commercial identification. Tom, let me, let me send you the whole document, but, but it does spell out what, what those are too. And, and as we transcode, you know, we do spot checks and things like that. They have to sign off on a form that also tells, that says that their programming adheres to that.
And who's the final jury? And when you say no, if you were to ever say no, who has the final say?
Well, I think a court of law has the final, final say, because this is, we're talking about First Amendment rights at this point, but, um, it would, it would be escalated to you folks into the city administrator, and, and if they didn't like that answer, then they sue us.
Us first, the, uh, communications commission first?
The city.
Council?
Uh, no, it doesn't go to the city council. The city administrator.
Well, I suggested you use the communications commission as a intermediate that would be, uh, perhaps, uh,
Yeah.
A good way to, to deal with that. I mean, that's what we, this commission was supposed to do with cable.
Yep. Yep, so, so the, the, once the grievance is received, communication staff will attempt to make an initial contact with the person filing the grievance. Um, a written response will be sent. There's some timelines in there. If they're not happy with that, then they can file an appeal to you folks. There's some timelines there. If they're not happy with that, um, failure to follow grievance, uh, if they don't like that, then they can go to my boss. Um, and so he's technically final, but of course we're talking First Amendment rights, so they can sue us.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, and let's move on to the next agenda item.
Wait, we get a, go, go ahead.
I do have one question. And when, where are those policies located?
So they are on the website under, so in the same place where you go to find the, there's a PDF link under the North, on the North Liberty TV page, on the same place where you, uh, find the submission information. And I can send you a link to that too, Tom.
Okay, well, uh, my only point would be that that was awfully hard to find. When I searched on policies and grievances, uh, generally I got 77 responses, and when I tried to specify, well, you say section five, I got 122, which was not very helpful.
Well, I understand. I, sure, and, and that's one of the reasons it's, it's there on that same place where, where if you, if you're looking for, for, for way, how do I submit my program to NLTV? It, it is, it is immediately adjacent to that as well. So, so those would be, those are, those are, if you're, if you found the one, it should be easier to find the other. But, but point taken.
Nick, are we voting on the addition?
I would like a vote on that if, if that's, okay, please.
All right, um, turning to motion.
I'd love a, a move, somebody to move and sec, and then somebody to second, uh, accepting that policy addition.
All right.
Second.
All right, so the, all those in favor of the additions to, what is it, the, the form?
To the policies and procedures.
The policies for the procedures, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those pose? All right, uh, no nay, so it looks like it's been approved.
Great, thank you much.
Next item on the agenda.
All right, this is the, this is, we're talking about the I Am Denver, the I Am North Liberty. We've, we've sort of got a few different working titles on this thing. Jillian was the one that put together the bulk of this document. Um, I'll, I'll just preface it by saying this is something that we've been talking about for a couple of years. And sort of trying to figure out how best to do it. Um, it came out of a conference that she and I went to in Denver, um, a couple of years ago, where the city of Denver actually has a position in their mayor's office called the, uh, chief storyteller. And this was, this is, is an indigenous woman who was laid off from the Wash, uh, from the Denver Post when that newspaper closed. And her whole job is to go and tell stories of, of people in Denver. Um, and she really focuses a lot on, on, on underrepresented stories. Um, because Denver has grown so much and changed so much. So I, so I think this is, this is again, something we've been talking about for a while. This is an opportunity to use it, um, I think, to tell some important stories and to amplify some of those, those voices in our community. Um, and it kind of came out of a, out of a discussion of, um, earlier in June, there was a, a, an event held there at, um, Penn Meadows Park where, where black members of our community had an opportunity to, to sort of speak up and, and talk about their experiences. And, and so part of our goal here is to, to do something similar to that, but also, um, we think this is flexible. I, uh, maybe I should stop and let Jillian talk a little bit about what, uh, what her thinking was and sort of how, how we put this together. Do you mind, Jillian?
All right, can you hear me? Um, so Nick's given a grid overview already. Um, I know that it's been included in the packet for you guys, kind of what we're looking at outlining, so I don't know if you had a chance to look at the examples for I Am Denver. Um, but as, as Nick was discussing, um, this is a series that is, is quite involved, um, for the city of Denver, that includes storytelling labs. Um, helping people actually create these stories and, and physical workshops, um, which of course they're, they're probably not physically doing right now. Um, but they had a, a good series that's linked there of eight, um, short videos, two to three minutes each, that talk specifically about social injustice, and it looked very similar to what we were um, remembering, hearing from this keynote speaker at our conference last September, and, and what we're thinking here now. Um, so I did reach out to, to the, the storyteller there in Denver and, and got a little more information from her, which was used as part of this, um, thinking about the prompts. But we'd like to do something specific on, on racial injustice, um, with the time that we are in currently, but as Nick said, provide some flexibility to this format of short storytelling videos that could allow us to cover a variety of issues or topics in the community in the future as well. Um, it allows people to put themselves in their neighbor's shoes, uh, whether that is, um, people of different racial backgrounds or just age, um, different backgrounds, to know their life experiences, to all relate better to one another and, and to provide kind of an archive of these stories on our website, that we would also, of course, share on social media. So we very much want to do this for racial injustice. Um, first, stories, um, of our residents, um, whether those interactions happened, um, while they were in North Liberty or at somewhere they lived in the past, doesn't matter to us. We just want to hear, um, those stories and let people realize that these are experiences that people that are their coworkers and next-door neighbors, um, do have, and, uh, help them relate, um, help them understand their story. Um, hopefully achieving this, um, recorded, um, storytelling process rather quickly, um, over the course of a month, and doing it digitally, uh, outside of probably the shoot, which we haven't gotten to all the technical details on that yet. Um, but, but bringing out these stories, possibly, uh, working with a few in the community to tape some stories, um, to share, to inspire others to, to really see what we're thinking about doing. So we can collect more of those, um, and, and, and share them out regularly and have them, you know, saved on our website that we could continually go back to. Um, we're both, we're asking people to really talk about a crucible moment in their life where they, they felt something, um, you know, it really changed something about their identity or, or, um, is something that now was a really transformative experience for them, which, which we would do through a few prompted questions, uh, which you see on that sheet, you know, where were you, how did it feel? What was the, the, that actually took place? And to help them tell that in a very concise way. So that we can create, um, a series project, which, as Nick mentioned as well, is still, uh, to be determined on the exact title, so we'd be open to suggestions on that.
How would you go about, um, recruiting individuals to tell their story?
Yeah, um, you know, we've, we've gone back and forth on, on what we could possibly do here. Uh, I do think it's very beneficial for people to see examples of what we're, we're doing to make them comfortable with sharing their story. Um, we thought about, um, I'll, I'll circle back to your question, but we thought about offering the video option, um, which is like the example we sent, and then also more just an anonymous written, um, brief story that we could also share, um, for those that don't want their identity or, um, themselves on video or aren't comfortable telling the story that way, um, anonymous or not written. Um, so the way we thought we would go about and, and are open to your suggestions as well is, um, talk maybe amongst the commission, um, maybe amongst other people that work for the city on, um, some individuals in the community that we may already know. Um, I know Nick's having some discussions with some, um, other folks in the community that maybe he could touch on after this, um, see who they, they might be connected to. Some people that we know will, um, maybe be a little more comfortable sharing their story, are already really involved in the community, have already shared their story at, say, the, the event that was in Penn Meadows Park, um, in June. And recording a few of these, and then releasing them along with the call to action, um, of which we would probably have these prompts in a form on our website. It's one idea that we have, um, to kind of gather the, the initial part of the story, ask what level of comfort they have, written, video, et cetera, for, for sharing their story, and then reaching back out, um, at that point, to try to put together a plan, um, to share that for them.
I have a question. Does these stories, or is it, uh, critical that they be, uh, painful? Or can they be a positive experience that they've had living in North Liberty?
Yeah, I, I think what we're looking for is, is, is all of that, right? I think we want to, and I think the idea behind the I remember when, or whatever this ends up being called, is that, that we can solicit, solicit, again, it's about crucible moments. It's about moments that, 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 that change the way you thought or felt or interacted, and that, 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 that probably means high emotion, but not necessarily anger. Um, and I think, I think it could be joy. I think it could be, I think it could be insight. I think that there's a lot of different, um, I think, I think it means all of those things, because we're talking about a diversity of experience.
And I watched a few of those videos from Denver, and I, I thought they were very helpful. There was an elderly man, and then there was a young woman, uh, kind of a middle-aged woman. Uh, just talking about moving there and what she experienced in the environment there, uh, and meeting new people. You know, which, North Liberty is such a friendly community, uh, that could be a real strong positive, uh, for our community to see.
I.
See our community.
Yeah, I definitely agree, Mike, and that's where the kind of series themes could come out of this. If our first one focuses on racial injustice, um, to give voices to some of those unheard stories in our community, but then also, um, you know, whether it's a few months from now, or in the spring, or next year, maybe it is something that's, when did you feel like North Liberty was home? Or when did, you know, When did you feel like North Liberty was home? Or when did you know some positive story in that way? Or maybe stories of I remember when. You know, North Liberty was small. It wasn't on the map yet. There could be a variety of different stories. But it would be nice to theme them. I could tell you you have looked at the variety. I think it's been a few years that they've worked on compiling these stories in Denver. With a full time department of. Several people working just on their storytelling project. So on our initial discussions internally, we would hope for. We just throw out there like six. Stories per maybe subject. It also might get to the point where there might be a theme every once in a while, such as racial injustice or. Oh, I can't think of the other topics we we brainstorm of it, but we could also just have one offs. You know, and and over time in the archive on our website, we would theme those out. So we we're hoping to build something here that could tackle the important conversation at hand right now. And and provide those stories and then also have the flexibility to. Realize that there's a lot of different people's unheard stories, positive and and challenging. That we could kind of group together in the future.
I'm going back to the recruitment process. So say that someone is interested in telling their story. Are they filling out a form? Are they just sending you guys an email? Are they giving you a brief story, you know, and then you continue on the conversation and say, oh, this makes the cut, this doesn't?
Yeah. So I I think one thing that one thing that we saw work well was when we did the Spark events with with the De Novo. And solicited people through a web form. They didn't have to give their name and and some people just really just wanted to get it off their chest. They really just wanted to provide an idea or provide a moment. And I think I think what we probably do is is have a have a very simple prompt and ask people to essentially tell us that thing. And and ask them to provide some contact information so we could help them help them figure out how to tell that. Or 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 flesh it out if 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 needed. And also to help judge sort of like their interest in in. Do you really want to do it on video? Like if like we'd like you to do it and 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 help them sort of through that. Because I think to do this well and help them. Put their tell their best story is going to take some. Take some take some support and some help on our end. So I think, you know, a web form with some basic prompts that we're pushing out through those channels. And 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 using some of those to some of those are going to come in more naturally. As stories and some some really are just going to want to be. I just need to make sure that that city staff knows. This experience happened to me. And that's all that's all they're really going to want from it. And I think it can provide a nice. I think it can provide that outlet too, which is which is I think a bonus of of doing it that way as well.
I think my thing I I just think of it in an inclusive way to make sure we are able to provide. Stories from everyone regardless of their background and the barriers that might exist. So you might have someone who English is a second language to them. Are we allowing that? You know, you if you want to tell your story, you want to tell your story in the language that you're comfortable in and will we offer translations for that?
Yeah, I think I think we haven't tackled that yet, but I don't think we would. I think that there there's obviously some natural challenges there. I don't think any of those are are un unovercomable. I mean, translation is is a super easy one. I think the biggest trick would be. As as a as an as an English speaker, not being able to help somebody who who. Tell their story in Arabic or in Chinese. And and I think so I think that there would be some hurdles there. I don't think those are things we couldn't overcome. I think those would be good challenges and growth moments. For the project. And and I think we'd be certainly open to them if we could figure out the best way to. To 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 work through those. I think it'd be super cool to have a whole. Season or or include in some of those include in some of those, right? Somebody telling their story in in. French or or Sudanese. Like, I think that'd be a super neat thing. Just as a way to help again amplify some of those 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 that that diversity that that we know is there and is oftentimes underrepresented. Often over underrepresented.
So if you do have any, anyone has. Some people that they know might have a good story for this first venture. At this, please share them with us. And also, we need to think about the best ways to do the recruitment, not not just how they'll get it to us, but how are we going to get the message out that we're asking for these stories to them? And we have our obvious channels, but as we've already discussed in the commission several times over the years, that doesn't hit everyone. And all those people it's not hitting are also people that have stories to tell. So. Please, you know, challenge us and as we dive deeper into this, now that we've shared it, the initial idea with you, you know, we want to make sure that we're. Trying to spread the word. About soliciting these stories as broadly as we can.
I have a question about the implementation of it. I am Denver has its own URL and it seems just link into the the city website or. You need to do everything from like shooting, editing. The web forms and everything in house. And do you think you have the resources to handle that?
Yeah, I think I think we are planning to do that. I actually had a really nice conversation with Josh Booth earlier today and and he's a he's a local videographer. So so I think there's some partnership opportunities there, but I also think we have we have the people to do it in house. Particularly and I think, you know, in the same way that we've we've done the podcast. On a schedule that works for the team, I think we'll find a way to do to met these out in a in a way that works for the team. And, you know, I think we can we know when those peaks and interests will be, right? They'll be when we first announce it. They'll be when we put out the first collection. And I think if we plan ahead, we can build. Build our solicitation sort of around those moments and then spend time. Doing those recordings, those video and and helping people tell their stories and then releasing a chunk or. Or we'll sort of figure out how what those what those those contours are. But yes, I think we can do it all in house.
So then the first set of stories, what's the the theme? So we can start, you know, communicating with those that we know.
Yeah, we really are talking about racial and social injustice. And and I think that's that's the moment that we're in. And I think that those are the stories that we know are are under told in our own community and 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 people are looking for a way to talk about those.
I think I know a family that would like to contribute to that and I'll contact them and let them contact you.
Great.
And do you have a a general idea of a timeline as to when? You'd like to release or when you'd like to start filming, anything like that?
Yeah. So I I mean, I think, you know, we we in that in that in that note that Jillian put together is a fairly short. We're hoping to sort of pull this off with a relatively short. Timeline and and have these ready to go by early August. You know. As we sort of as we sort of work through how exactly the prompt's going to work, I think we want to have a few short pieces. In early August so that we can then put that out, show people that example and then solicit more for sort of that next round. To do to sort of flesh that out before we do sort of think about it. I mean, if I think about it in sort of TV terms, right, we want to shoot a little bit of a pilot. And then do season one and then get ready for season two after that. And so I think we'd like to do a pilot here in the next month. And have that ready.
Do you already have the topic for the next one? So we're kind of possibly ahead.
We don't yet. I think that that's sort of that's and and if folks have ideas that they would like to throw at us, we'd be happy to to take those. And I mean, some of it too, I think is we want to be flexible. And if there's a really big response and and there's more there than we can. Turn around in in our in our period of time. Maybe maybe we do sort of first half of season one, second half of season one before and before we we try different themes.
And that's very much what I would say as well. First half, season one, second half, season one for the racial injustice, social injustice series, because we do want to provide two, three. As examples for the call up for the larger stories. Larger. Range of them. So I think there's going to be. The first one that comes out when we do a call publicly. Those examples and then, you know, the the second part, when we get those, hopefully another month later, I'm trying to keep them pretty tight.
Okay. And we don't have a name yet for the project.
We don't. We've got a few I names that we kind of like. But haven't settled on anyone in particular. You know, this is this is a little bit of a mashup that that between sort of the I am Denver thing, but we also. Right after all the spark conversations, wanted to find a way to like, that was a really positive. Experience for a lot of folks. And so we we sort of talked about like a a way to do that again. And this is this is kind of pulling those ideas together. We talked about I I remember when we've talked about a few others. The other the other thing that has occurred to us is is potentially we we build this thing in a in a way that works well for North Liberty. And then we talk with with. Coralville and talk with Iowa City, which also have production units. And say, is this something that 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 you folks want to be a part of too? And and, you know, it's a format that's either repeatable and they can do their own sort of franchise of it, or do we look for a way to? Do we look for something that we can pool all those together and and have a have a wider. A a larger pool of of stories. So I so I think when we talk about names, we don't want it to be too milquetoast, but we also don't want it to be. You know, do we want it to be very North Liberty? Do you want it to be larger? So I think I think those. The name is still sort of. Up for consideration and and refining.
Do you want to decode fifty two me seventeen?
Uh, I believe that that was a play on five, two, three, one, seven, five, two, me, one, seven was the.
Okay, thanks.
The code there.
I must.
That answers our question on how obvious that is.
I thought of something so simple. It was just I am with the blank where that person identifies who they are. And they.
Yeah.
Yeah, that certainly doesn't put it to any particular theme. You know, or or locale, so.
Yeah. That really focuses it too on on crucible moments, right? Which sort of is supposed to get at the heart of of who somebody is. I like that a lot.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
If something occurs to you folks after this meeting, feel free to to shoot us an email with your thoughts. Or call or whatever.
All right, moving on. What's next? I am on the agenda.
We got old business, new business and adjournment. One, two, three.
All right. Any old business want to talk about? Moving on, new business? Adjournment, am I right? Okay.
To adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing out this meeting, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Welcome to the team, Mike.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. It looks like a great group.
All right, bye.
Bye.
Bye, folks.